Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 5 regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. I'll call this meeting to order. If you would, bow with me as I lead us in invocation and then join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, we come before you tonight asking for guidance. Give this Board guidance to handle the county's business. Give us the wisdom to do the right things for our citizens and that your will be done in this county, Lord. Be with all our uniformed officers and first responders and firefighters and our men and women in the military, Lord. Be with them that they can provide for the citizens and protect this county, this state, and this nation. And be with the ones that have been sick, Lord, and in your name I pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, we all have the agenda in front of us as there. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Eifert.
I'll make a motion when we approve the agenda as presented, sir.
Got a motion from Commissioner Eifert, a second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Item one, Senior Services Advisory Board Appointments. Becky Wehmoff. Come on up, Becky.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On our advisory board, we have four members whose term has expired. Three of those board members wish to be reappointed, and they are Don Morrison from Norwood, Beth Hill, and Dr. J.C. Boone. They wish to be reappointed for another three-year term. The fourth board member, David Amon, wishes not to be reappointed. He's already served three two-year terms, and during that six years, he's served as chairman, vice chairman during his time, and so he's served faithfully, and so we are appreciative of his years of service. Anyway, the Board tries to get board members from all parts of the county to be represented on the Board, and they met, discussed at length, and then asked me to approach several people who live in the part of the county that Mr. Amon lived in to consider if they would be willing to serve on the Board. Phyllis Smith, who is the candidate I'm bringing to you tonight, she's agreed to serve. She was actually out of the country, really out of the country, for about two to three weeks, and I was unable to reach her, although I did reach her husband. But anyway, when she came back in the back home, I did approach her. I think you have an application there from someone in Albemarle who submitted a volunteer application, but that was actually came in after I'd already spoken to her husband about this position. So she would have been considered even though that wasn't part of the western part of the county, but we will certainly hold on to that for next year whenever we have some vacancies, if we do. So therefore, I ask that you reappoint Don Morrison, Dr. J.C. Boone, and Elizabeth Hill to be reappointed to our advisory board, and I ask that Phyllis Smith be appointed to serve on the Board for a three-year term, all the terms ending October 30, 2020.
Thank you, Becky. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions? Becky Wehmoff.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
I move to reappoint Don Morrison, Dr. J.C. Boone, and Elizabeth Hill, and appoint Phyllis Smith to a three-year term through October 30, 2020.
I'll second that.
Got a motion to reappoint Don Morrison, Dr. J.C. Boone, Elizabeth Hill, and to appoint Phyllis Smith. Motion from Commissioner Swain, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item two, Award of the County Audit Service Contract for 2017-18. Presenter Toby Hinson.
Hey, how are you doing? Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. It's the time of year where we select and you all approve a firm to perform our audit services for the current year. As you may recall, Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams did the audit for the '16-'17 year at a cost of $48,500. Our previous auditor who did it for auditing firm who did it for a number of years before had such a large increase from '16 to '17, which I think was a $6,000 increase because of that, which was too large of an increase to work with. That's why we've mainly changed firms. I reached out to Alan Thompson, who's the managing partner for this firm, and he definitely expressed interest in doing it another year, and the cost he proposed was the same as last year. There'll be no increase in their fees for the same services. Taking this in consideration, I didn't even contact the firm that did it before because I know their fees would, I'm sure, still be just as high as they were. So my recommendation for this '16-'17 year would be to go with Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams to perform our audit. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Toby, Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Commissioner Lohon.
I know last year, there was a little bit of nervousness about changing firms, as Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams, and Company worked out good for you.
For the first year, I think it went well. It probably didn't go quite as smooth as what it normally does, but in talking with other counties and cities who just recently changed their first year, I think probably didn't sound like it didn't go as good as ours, but they said the second year was, well, some was quite a bit better. And, you know, I didn't realize how, you know, if it'd be much difference or not because we stayed with the previous one for so many years. I mean, and they've done a good job for that amount of years. But it's just a matter of getting to know how they want certain things, when they want them, and, you know, how they meet deadlines. And so I would say for the first, being the first time we use them, I think it went okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
I'll make a motion that we approve Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams, and Company to perform the fiscal year 2017-18 audit.
Got a motion from Commissioner Eifert. I think I got a second from Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams, and Company to perform the '17-18 audit, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. Item three, Planning and Zoning. ZA 18-01, rezoning request for Joseph D. Whitley. Presenter Michael Sandy. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Before you tonight is a rezoning request, ZA 1801, Joseph Whitley, requesting zoning of 11.24 acres located in northwest corner of 2427 and Bethel Church Road from RA Residential Agriculture to HB Highway Business. Property is currently zoned RA Residential-Agricultural. Most of the properties surrounding this parcel are RA and zoning with the town of Red Cross. The adjacent properties are either used for residential or agricultural purposes. The joint property to the west contains Stanley County Utilities Water Tank. Mr. Whitley plans to instruct a building on the mostly wooded lot for the location of his business, which is the sales of wood mizer products. This would be a retail location and office for his business, although many of his sales are done off-site. Retail buildings are allowed in HB Highway Business District because the surrounding properties are used for non-business purposes the property utilizes, utilized by the business will be screened to meet all the requirements of the Stanley County zoning ordinance. And HB districts are appropriate for limited commercial activities, including large lots, requiring large lots. This parcel is currently mostly wooded. Property's been in the Whitley family for many years, and Mr. Whitley lived on this property about 30 years ago. It's located in northwest corner 2427 and Bethel Church Road. He would like to utilize the driveway on 2427. Traffic along this section of 2427 is about 16,000 cars per day, and traffic on Bethel Church Road is about 2,100 cars per day. The property is located in a growth area per 2010 Stanley County Land Use Plan, and the planning board met on February 12 with unanimous recommendation for this request due to its location on the highway and in a growth area for the county. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sandy?
Did I read that this is inside city limits of Red Cross?
It is not. It's in the county jurisdiction. It is surrounded by Red Cross's city limits.
No other questions for Mr. Sandy. I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? See none. I will declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lohon.
I'll make a recommendation that rezoning be approved.
Mr. Lohon, could you amend that motion to include that the property is in the growth area?
Yes. I make the motion that we approve the rezoning of this property, which is in a growth area of Stanley County.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lohon and a second from Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? None. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, Michael. Item four, Utilities. Contract awards for the waterline hookup project. Presenter Deidra Turner, Utilities Project Coordinator, and Donna Davis, Utilities Director.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just want to take this opportunity to introduce our project compliance coordinator, Ms. Deidra Turner, who is a valuable member of Stanley County's Utilities Team who's been working on this project. So I'm going to let her do the presentation this evening. I would like to bring to your attention, this is for a hookup grant program, one of which we've been not able to do in the county for several years, and that the Board was able to fund with this past budget cycle, and so we're moving forward with it, and she has an award request for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the Board. For the past 30-plus years, Stanley County has worked diligently to extend waterlines throughout the county. When waterlines are installed, not everyone's able to connect to the public water system for various reasons. Homeowners may not have the funds available to pay the tap fee, or they may not be able to afford the private plumber, which is required to come out and make the connections. We have a growing list of names and addresses of homeowners asking for our help so that they can disconnect from their wells and have a good water source available to them like many of their neighbors. Stanley County Utilities has contracted with Central Line Council of Governments to facilitate our waterline hookup program. We began this process with a list of 29 families. We use the HUD and CDBG guidelines for the low to moderate household income levels for qualification purposes. In accordance with both sets of guidelines, we have identified 17 single-family homes that meet qualifications in Stanley County for our program. Now we can assist these 17 families by providing them with safe, clean drinking water, and we hope we are able to assist more Stanley County residents in the near future through this program. On January 24, 2018, a bid package along with the cover letter was mailed out to 22 licensed plumbing contractors in the area, and you have a copy of those lists of plumbers and their addresses, as well as the cover letter that was in the bid package. And at this time, if you would refer to that cover letter, there was a correction that I needed to bring to your attention, and that is the monetary amount of $75,000. It should be $60,000 awarded. With that letter, the plumbers were instructed to bid on two separate groups of addresses. Group A consisted of nine locations, Group B eight locations, for the total of 17 separate locations. Our plan was to divide and distribute the work between two qualified plumbing companies in order to complete the project in a timely fashion. On February 14, 2018, at 3:00 PM, the open bid meeting took place. Only one company out of the 22 invited attended the meeting on February 14, and that was United Plumbing Associates from Concord, North Carolina. At this time, Stanley County Utilities would like to award both bid packages, Group A and Group B, all 17 locations to United Plumbing Associates from Concord, North Carolina. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Mr. Lohon.
United Plumbing and Associates, what do we know about this company?
They have done business with us in previous years. This was before my time.
They've completed several contracts in the hookup grant program with Stanley County in prior years.
Have we had other local plumbing companies to do work for our county?
In prior bidding scenarios, we did. We've had a couple other local Stanley County plumbers that did participate in the program. They're familiar with it. I think they're aware of it. We did our best to make them informed about this. Apparently, the tradesmen in this county are very busy at this time, and, you know, some items they are declining to respond to or to participate in, but we did make our best effort to make sure that they knew that this program was up and running again and that it was available to them for bidding purposes.
Any other questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
I'll just make the comment that it seems to be an excellent time to be in the trades, but I will also move to accept the service contract for Group A and Group B properties as presented for United Plumbing of Concord.
Got a motion to award the contract, United Plumbing, from Commissioner Swain. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Eifert. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment. I'm going to vote for this, but I'm really disappointed that we're having to go out of county again to have work done, performed by a Cabarrus County company. I sure wished our contractors in Stanley County would bid, because it'd be nice to leave it here in Stanley County.
Ms. Davis, I would, I just like, I've got one comment, too, that is worth noting. I did talk to a couple of the subs that were on this list, and I think they were, had some concerns about the way the bid request was drafted, and I think some of those folks checked some of the locations, and they seemed to be very concerned that the contractor that we may be getting ready to award this to may not be able to complete this at the bid price that they've given, that they probably have not done some of their due diligence. So I know we've run into that situation before, so I just ask the Utilities Department to be very mindful of what is going on to make sure that they have submitted this bid and that they do complete this work.
Certainly, and I appreciate your concerns, and one of the things we did was not, only is this a group package, each individual home is bid independently. So if we get to a point where there's an issue, it can be broken down and broken out. It's not just a lump-sum bid where it's all or nothing, and we can monitor as we go along and make sure. And all of our requirements indicate or require that they go through the Stanley County Inspections Department to make sure that this is done according to North Carolina State Plumbing Code and that we are, indeed, this program is getting what it's paying for.
I would just hope that as they go through this list of projects, they don't pick the low-hanging fruit off and then stick us with ones that may be a little more difficult or a little more pricey to complete. So that's just my comments. Any other discussion from the Board?
I have one. How many, did anybody else bid except this company?
We didn't receive any other bids. Apparently, there was at least one other plumber that went to some of the households because we talked with some of the residents, and they said that plumbers had been out. And this particular plumber did ask a lot of questions, and he checked on a lot of different things, and so, you know, I don't know how to get, even in prior years, the most we've ever had, our request information or bid has been four plumbers for this program, and we've done it. We spent half a million dollars in this program over the last 10 years, and we've never had more than four plumbers in Stanley County participate in the program.
I remember, it's always been a problem as long as I've been on the Board.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Davis, Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
Item five, Sheriff's Office, 2017 Year-End Review. Presenter George T. Burris. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate y'all letting me come and share what the Sheriff's Office has produced and done in 2017. It's amazing at what the personnel of the Sheriff's Office completes and does for this great county and our citizens. It's amazing at the extra effort that they're putting forth, and I've got a lot of information. I don't want to bore you, but if I don't give these men and women credit, then I'm not doing them justice as a sheriff. So if y'all will just bear with me, some of the things we've done in '17, we've become real community outreach-minded. Chief King has really stepped forward helping with Special Olympics, and me and her, and we've got a group, we've done the polar plunge, we do this outreach. But in 2017, the Sheriff's Office here for Stanley County Special Olympics in North Carolina raised over $11,000 for Special Olympics, and we did a tip-a-cop where Sheriff's Office personnel was waiters and waitresses at a local restaurant, and we invited all the local agencies to participate, and we raised money there. We did a glow run. We had 105 runners last year, and we'll have it again this year. And we did the polar plunge last year and had a great time, but that's some of the things that we do for outreach. And some of the other things we did, we participated in No Shave November, and everybody enjoyed that, but we raised $1,400 towards cancer research just in one month. Then we have Project First Step, and y'all probably heard about that. Lot of the local facilities and law enforcement's trying to get a better way of putting folks addicted to opioids or drugs in programs instead of just locking them up. Well, we came up with a plan at the office, and we did a No Tie December, and the program not had any money donated yet to place anyone in a program or a facility, so we done this program at the office and raised $425 for those folks and presented them a check. You know, we got the MRAP last year, a $600,000 vehicle we got for $6,000, and we all spoke. Well, hopefully, we'll never have to use it. Well, we used it two times in 2017 with two different barricaded subjects in our county, so it is paying off. We did Shop with a Cop, and this is two events in Baden Police and Locust Police. We get to go out there and shop with kids. Doesn't get to have everything, some of the other kids do, and we spend money on them. We go to Walmart, and we treat them for breakfast, and Locust PD hosts one, and Baden PD hosts one, and that's one of the things we take pride in, and we have five or six deputies every year that'll volunteer to go shop with these kids off-duty. And that really means a lot to these kids. And then we partnered with a local, our local Catholic church. They reached out to me about if we could deliver meals to underprivileged families, and we delivered meals on a Saturday, just giving back to our community and helping out. And the deputies do that with a warm heart because they love their county. And when we're partnering with other agencies and municipalities and churches, and we're reaching out to our community, in a lot of people's eyes, that may not be nothing to them, but when you see our citizens light up because they're receiving things that normally they wouldn't, that is very heartfelt. So to know we've got a Sheriff's Office that their personnel loves our county enough, that means a lot to us. And one of the things we take pride in, when we started in 2014, we've got the Stanley County Sheriff's Office Cadet Program, and that's ages 13 to 20, and these young kids meet every month at the office, and we teach them canine, fingerprinting, crime investigation, vehicle stops. When we started in '14, we had three people in it. Well, this past year, we graduated in December, 17 young folks from Stanley County through this program, and we held an awards banquet for them at a local restaurant. That's the things that this Sheriff's Office does that puts our personnel above any other in the state. And to be sheriff and to have folks like this and to be a Board, that is something to be proud of and to brag on, and we need to pat them on the back every day. And on top of that, and on top of all the community events, they did 4,453 hours of training. So to put in that perspective, the previous administration compared to this administration, we've done 4,000 more hours in three years than they did in four, training hours and education. We've got somebody almost every month getting an advanced certificate or intermediate certificate for training and education. So if we're getting better-trained deputies, then we've got a better trained and educated personnel at the Sheriff's Office to be proud of. And like you all know, we got to attend a lot of parades throughout the year, but I got to be in eight different parades last year in our community around here and get to see kids and families and smiling faces like many of you do, and that means a lot to folks when we show up. It just takes a little bit of our time, but we're investing in our communities. And one thing I'm passionate about is we got, I got to speak personally at two different mock car crash scenes at our high schools, where we're talking about when it's prom time and not drinking and driving. I got to speak for two of them, and one Judge Nance spoke, and then one Judge Tucker spoke to our high school kids. So remember those kids during those times. And also a big thing, I got to speak at three different day graduations for over 600 kids in this county, to teach them over a 10-week period and program to not use drugs, alcohol, tobacco, and then we put in an anti-bullying section in our program also. So it's hard to put in perspective of what everybody does and how much they give forth, and on top of that, we held our annual day of prayer for our law enforcement. Had about 300 people come to that. Then I held a church security event a few months ago. We had over 400 people come to that. Since then, I have two of my cert team guys go to these churches, and they inspect them, do a walkthrough, look for anything that's a security threat. They've already been at over 20 churches. over 20 churches over the past four or five months. So, our citizens want a proactive Sheriff's Office, and they look for us, for us, for leadership, but the thing is, and I tell everybody, I couldn't do this by myself without county commissioners and our county manager. I always try to let them know behind everything, you guys helped orchestrate all this and keep things moving forward, and plus, one thing we started was our trunk or treat at the Sheriff's Office, and just brag on the personnel, the first year we did this in 15, we had about 500 people come through, second year, we had about 1,100. This past year, we had 1,800 people come through in two hours to trunk or treat with their kids, grandkids, and all the candy was either bought out of a Miss Lance account, didn't cost the county a dime, or one of our local churches partnered with us, so when you've got kids coming through at a safe place, that means a lot, so that's all our community stuff, but I had two pages, but I knew I didn't have enough time for all that, but that's some of the good stuff that your Sheriff's Office is doing, thanks with your help and your backing and your support. Now, to get to the meat of it, we was looking at over the grant stuff we've done over the past three years, and I got with Chief King, Captain Russell, over a three-year period with grants, we've received over $166,000 worth of grants, $166,000. That includes $20,000 for new weapons and duty gear, over almost $15,000 for ballistic vests for our patrol deputies, we just got a grant last year on our ICAC, and I'm proud to say all three of our narcotics positions are full, and the ICAC slash detective is full, so now we're monitoring with this $42,810 of forensic equipment we got the grant for last year, we're monitoring sexual predators, sex offenders, and pedophiles over social media that's coming after our kids, and thanks to Sergeant Miller, who is the lead on this equipment, a couple of months ago, he located a pedophile, it ended up it was in Mecklenburg County, we had the SBI step in, and this man had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of illegal pornography on his computer, and we, because what equipment you guys helped us get through this grant, was able to push this information on up the chain and got him on that. So, people think things don't happen in Stanley County, well, we don't have that problem here, but we're helping our surrounding counties so it doesn't end up here, and this year, we just got awarded our $73,865 purchase for on our in-car cameras, and on top of that, y'all know I'm big about license checks, well, with our license checks, we found wanted felons, stolen vehicles, stolen weapons, drugs, and paraphernalia. When you do license checks and you do all this outreach, as far as trying to get drunk drivers, we get points through the Governor's Highway Safety Program. Well, this year, we've got $6,200, and we got a radar, four Alka sensors used to judging their, when they blow for their alcohol level, and we got 25 DWI blood test kits, in '16, we got $9,200 worth, so in two years, we've gotten $15,400 worth of grants from the state that we're using, getting drunk drivers off the road and making sure our streets and highways are safe. This year, we took the initiative, you know, we have to have 24 hours in-service training, well, now we're took the initiative to try to save some of that money from comp time and paying hourly, so we're moving about all of our training online. Well, I had the chief do a price comparison to see what we were saving, as a deputy sheriff this coming year, we're gonna save over $13,000, because they're gonna do it online while it's on-duty, and the detention center, we're gonna save over $9,000 by doing this training. So, as a total for 2018, we're looking at saving $22,494 based on an average deputy detention officer salary. These are initiatives the Sheriff's Office are taking now and being more proactive, and if you look at the grants we received, over $166,000 in three years and four months, and you look at the training we're gonna save, you've gotta have a comparison, so we compared it to the previous at, from 2010 to 2014, during those years, based on what CAD says, RMS, and our records at the office, they received $22,980 in four years in grants, in three years, we've received over $166,000. So, if that's not a complete turnaround, I don't know what is, and that's because we've got awesome people in the positions doing great things, and some of the things we've done on patrol, Captain Russell, our lieutenants, and everybody has taken it to another level, this past year was up, 227 license checks, we directed traffic for helping municipalities, EMS, fire, 1,523, which was up from 16. Our security checks, well, we check businesses during the night and day, we check restaurants, we check churches, we check homes, they did over 2,000 more this year than they did last year, they had 4,746. That's putting boots on the ground and making sure our businesses are locked up and safe, and some of them, we did find that somebody had broke into, and then we contacted the owners, and said, here's what we found, that's being proactive and progressive, and I really appreciate from them. Our drug citations was up, in '16, it was 67, last year, we did 102 drug citations. Transports was up 100, we did 505 in '17, and that's involuntary commitments, helping out anybody we can, and transporting, this is on top of the other duties the deputies are doing, and our DWIs, 17 DWIs last year, it was up 50% from 2016. We've gotten everybody more qualified, I've got about eight folks intoxicated or certified, where we can conduct our own test at the jail and make sure they're going, and our civil process was up, too, we serve more civil papers, we have more training hours, we serve more warrants in court, we had more knives prevented from coming in our courthouse, they stopped 1,277 knives from coming in, and they assist patrol 68 times for transports also, so not only are patrol deputies working hard, our bailiffs are coming out that's sworn and helping us out on patrol when we need it, and then in our CID division, we're investigating a lot more things now, instead of just doing a report and turning it in, we investigated and made sure over 64 non-homicide death investigations, and those are all usually, you know, just a common death, but we looking into them more than was in the past, and like I said earlier, our three narcotics positions are full, and those three guys are working hard and doing a great job, and making arrests, and doing everything else, but one thing that I'm very proud of from our criminal investigations, in 2016, we recovered a little over $91,000 worth of stolen property, in 2017, $217,000 worth of stolen property that was recovered and will be returned back to victims. That means a lot when you're solving cases and getting property back, and of course, our detention center, y'all know how it is, we did a lot in there with Morpha Track and our computer systems, making sure everything was going, me and Andy spoke about several times, before a person would come in, they'd have to be booked in, you'd enter them three different times. Well, thanks to you guys and girls last year and giving us the extra money, now we've got it where an inmate comes in, he's booked in one time, that officer can leave, and our detention staff can handle them. So, doing things like this not only speeds up our process at the Sheriff's Office, but we're helping other agencies get back on patrol and get back to Locust or the state and do their job. But average daily population was up, and they did a fantastic job, but in 2017, we had 5,999 inmates processed, that's booking in and out, our average number of day processed was 16. Now, that's a lot for us, but it shows the great partnership we have with our local agencies, Highway Patrol, Wildlife, and this is something that is staggering, you know, we serve and we cook all the meals for Stanley County and for Anson County, our detention staff made 131,000 meals last year, and then we take them to them, so we work well, and we've done a timekeeping system where we can make sure our detention officers are going around, and we partner with our other agencies in the county to help take the blunt of some of these things, but I know that's a lot of information, and I know I've been rattling it off, but when you've got an office like we have, I want you all to know how proud I am of them, how proud you should be, and they're only a phone call away, but when you've got numbers like this and statistics, it's hard to doubt them, so very proactive, very community-oriented, and just a great group, and we've got the most diverse Sheriff's Office we've ever had, we was looking at some of the numbers the other day, and we've got about the youngest Sheriff's Office that's been in there, but when you look at race and gender, we've got the most females that's working in there, and the most female supervisors that we've ever had, so it is, it's just a great time for the Sheriff's Office, and I know a lot of people getting out of law enforcement nowadays, but Stanley County is a great place to be and to live and to work, and you've got some wonderful folks there at that Sheriff's Office that love this county and love our citizens, but that's our basic 2017 year report, and if you have any questions, comments, concerns, I'm here for you.
Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate that wonderful report, keep up all the good work you're doing. Any questions from the board?
Just keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank y'all so much.
All right, item six, Economic Development Incentive Information Update, presenter, county manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the county doesn't have a formal incentive policy, but we do provide some basic information on our web, and we also have it in our collateral marketing information, and the EDC Board recently took a look at that, and they wanted to take a look at what other communities were doing, and so, at the EDC's last meeting, we walked them through a presentation that showed them what the counties in the region were doing, as well as similar-sized counties in the state, and gave them some examples, and so, we wanted to bring this before you, or the EDC Board requested that we bring these changes to our local incentives, the guidance that we present, we've showed it to you in two ways, we basically took what was currently listed in our marketing collateral and on our website, and we redlined it to show you the changes, and then we actually showed you a clean version with that same information, so basically, this was done to try to be, there isn't anything in terms of the percentages, and the dollar thresholds, the number of years that's different than what this board has done in the past, we used our benchmarks, we keep track of every grant that you all make, and note the percentages, the number of jobs, and so that we're tracking that so that we're not setting an unusual precedent when we bring those to you, as you all know, and so, there's nothing necessarily different about what we presented here than what your typical practice has been, but it's just more transparent in that folks can see and have some general guidance as to, okay, if we're investing less than a million dollars, but we're gonna create, you know, a certain number of jobs, that, you know, we may be able to get a, we may be able to get a grant in this range for this number of years, and then we stair-step that up, obviously, from less than a million all the way up to greater than 10 million. So, again, this isn't anything necessarily new, you've seen things like this before, as we've discussed incentives in the past, it's just really trying to put a little more information in front of psych consultants, business prospects, so they have some higher level of understanding of what kind of incentives the county offers, and one of the things I had to be careful of was not to, you know, our competition sees this as well, and so, we don't want to be so, or rigid in that, you know, if you do this, and you create this number of jobs, this is your grant, and so, because we wanted to keep the board to still have that autonomy and the flexibility, because if they're existing business, that you may give more weight to that, if they're, you know, if it's in a target sector, if it's something that we're really interested in bringing here, you may give more weight to that, so we didn't want to just put a, you know, specific percentages for a specific number of jobs with a specific investment, because that, again, that makes it very rigid, and it would be difficult for you all to have the flexibility to work within a range of percentages, and so, the EDC felt comfortable with this and has asked us to bring this forward as a recommendation for the board to approve, so that they can update their website and their marketing collateral to represent these changes, and I'll be more happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions from the board, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Morgan.
I just have one question, I guess, this is for the county manager, do the other counties that y'all looked at, do they have similar postings on their website, like detailing this?
It varied, there are some counties, I'll give you, for example, Catawba County is one that doesn't put any, and they were very similar to us, we offer incentives, give us a call, Cleveland County does the same thing, but their, Cabarrus County, Union County, Gassing County, they do have specific information out there, in fact, some counties, there's way more specific, and it's really, you know, you can follow a chart, and this is your exact grant, and again, I don't think that's, I don't think that's in the best interest of the board, because I think you need to have flexibility and autonomy and discretion on certain projects based on different factors, so it varies, but there are counties that don't put any information out, and I think that, there's a couple reasons why, and that in our research that we found, one is, your competition knows exactly what you're offering, or has some idea, the other thing is that you may never get a chance to have a conversation with that entity, that business may look at it and say, well, I can see what they're offering, and I can see what this person's offering, and they never really got a shot to actually engage them, and so, the way we had it before, where they had to call us and ask us, we got a chance to engage them and say, hey, this is generally what our board would do, and then we bring it to you all and get your blessing and be able to have that conversation, so this sort of balanced against some members of the EDC wanting something very specific, you know, investment, job created, this is the percentage, others said, you know, we really don't, we want a little more flexibility, so this was sort of a meet you halfway in terms of giving, being a little more transparent, so folks could see, generally, this is where the range of percentage you would have, and again, these are consistent with your benchmarks in the past, but at the same time, not going overboard of really tying your hands to a specific, you know, it's gonna be 55%, and if it's this number of jobs, it's 60%, if it's this number of jobs, it's 70%, so, this was an attempt to, and the EDC, like, the EDC Board was pleased with this and wanted us to bring this forward, an attempt to kind of bridge the gap between being really, really specific and rigid and very vague, so it really runs the gamut, some counties, there were more counties that provided this type of information on their website than there were than not, to answer your question. In our region, really, I think it was just Catawba and Cleveland that didn't mention on their website specifically what, or any kind of range of what their percentages were, all the others had more, actually, more detail than this.
I just, my only thing is, when you put stuff like that, I don't want to lose our competitive advantage, I guess you could say, where people know what you got, and they can undercut you, or, just like, I mean, the way everything's going nowadays, everything's on the web, so you're right, everybody probably shops without calling, and you don't even have a chance to reel them in, but I guess my question, my other question would be is, the other counties that have posted this, has anyone talked to them to see if it helped them or hurt them?
Michael's had comments, I'm sorry, Michael's had comments, obviously, he's worked in this business for a long time and had conversations with his colleagues, I don't think there was any that's helped us or hurt us, I mean, they, you know, they just generally want it out there, because that's the way, you know, the way everything's going with social media, I will say this, I don't, I've always said this, I've said this to folks, you know, I'll hear in the community, the county's not offering incentives, we're about as aggressive as they get with incentives, I've worked in three other, two other counties, this is my third county that I've worked in, and there's not a county that I've worked in that was as aggressive as this county is within respect to incentives, that's never been an issue, is this board's commitment to trying to get tax incentives, and I'll say that with the fact that the board's never given away more than it's gotten, and they're all, you know, based on performance, and so, you know, they don't just give cash up front, and then you have to perform, or there's some sort of way to claw back if you didn't perform, and this board's very aggressive. I will say that even a county to our north, you know, their minimum to start with is $3 million, and so, there's a lot of communities that don't even, a million is even, you know, is low, we actually would, and have done it in the past, gone below $1 million if it was for a certain type of job that we were looking for, so I think we're very aggressive, I do, there's a lot of communities that don't go more than five years, there's a lot of communities that don't go over 80% or 75% or 80%, and so, this board has been very aggressive, and I don't think, you're gonna, you've always stacked up well, and we'll continue to stack up well, against our competitors in this region and across the state for, with respect to incentives, that's, in my opinion, that's never been an issue with us in terms of closing a deal as our incentives, we've always done very well in that regard, it's been other factors that have limited us.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Commissioner Lohon.
I do think in paragraph three, that it reads, "The Stanley County Board of Commissioners has the discretion to modify or adjust," so even though we're giving this type of layout as a board of commissioners, you all can still modify or adjust.
Very, very good comment, I know Commissioner Lohon, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
I'd also like to add to Commissioner Lohon's comments, that paragraph three was at the request of the EDC Board, I think they saw the need... I think they saw the need for the commissioners to have that autonomy in this process. I support this process. I supported it at the EDC and I'll support it again this evening. I think it gives us a chance to show what we're willing to do without, you know, turning those people away and that there's just enough here on this paper, I feel that somebody will still pick up the phone and call our EDC director to have a conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain. I agree with that last comment. Get a little, put a little bait out there and they will call if they've got other questions. Any other comments from the board, questions? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the updated incentive information that our county manager has presented in written form tonight.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lohon. Do I have a second? Got a tie on the second. Second from Commissioner Swain. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Here, none. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, we are to the consent agenda. Item seven, consent agenda. Pleasure to the board.
A motion to approve is presented.
Got a motion to approve from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Have a second? Second, Commissioner Lohon. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Public comment, I don't have a, don't have a list, so maybe no one signed up. Would anyone like to address the board? I think it's noteworthy, we have Dr. James, our new superintendent. Evening, Dr. James. Thank you for being here and Representative Burr in background, thank you for being here. Thanks for your support. Board comments, announcements, committee reports. Commissioner Louder.
Thank you. I just want to announce to everyone that the Department of Health and Human Services Board met last week and did decide to change their meeting time to six P.M. on the regular scheduled meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Louder. Commissioner Effer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several years ago, the legendary voice of the Tar Heels, Woody Durham, Alamo resident, announced his retirement. Last year, legendary Bob Harris, for the voice of the Blue Dills, yeah, it's hard for me to say, Ashley, announced his retirement. This year, another legendary voice has announced his retirement. The dictionary says the definition of legendary is remarkably enough to be famous, very well-known. Mr. Warren, thank you so much for your years of service to Stanley County over the years. We certainly appreciate it and I've told you that before. We're going to miss you. The citizens of Stanley County will miss you. So again, thank you again for your service and I hope you have a great time in your retirement, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very well noted, Commissioner Effer. Thank you. Commissioner Swain.
No comments.
Commissioner Morgan.
No comment.
Commissioner Lohon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo what Commissioner Effer just said. Leon, I've always called you the mouth of Stanley County and I'm surely going to miss you and you have done a great job. I had the opportunity to attend the soil and watch Stanley County Soil and Water Conservation Annual Banquet on February twenty-sixth and I want to recognize some folks that were recognized that night. And these were students that did posters for water and soil conservation. There was a first place poster winner, Natalie Green from Baden Elementary School that won first place. Second place poster was Luke Dennis from Norwood Elementary School. And third place winner was Bella Wilkins, who is a member of the Awesome Academy Homeschool. So these young people were recognized throughout our county. There was a slideshow winner who was A.J. Bombardier, who is West Stanley Middle School. And the farm, no-till corn yield winner farm was B&amp;D Farms. Brian Burleson, and this is astounding, this is amazing. His yield on corn was two hundred and fifteen point six bushels per acre. Man, that's a lot of corn. Two thousand conservation farm family was Herlocker Farms Incorporated, which is run by Gary and Doris Herlocker, Charles Herlocker, and Wes Herlocker. And it was a very good program and I'm glad they recognize these people of Stanley County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohon. Vice Chairman McIntyre.
I'd like to say to Leon that we will miss you and I know when I came on board in nineteen ninety-eight, he was director of the Aggreg Civic Center and when he decided to leave, I was very upset and tried to block that, but it didn't work. So I think he went on to probably bigger and greater things. So congratulations into your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman McIntyre. I would just like to remind board members, we've got a sheet in our packet reception for Dr. Jeff James tomorrow evening, six P.M. I hope y'all can attend. And no comment from me, so I believe we are finished.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Effer.
Make a motion we adjourn, sir.
Got a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Effer, second from Commissioner Swain. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and stand up.